Okay, I believe it's 6 o'clock. I want to welcome all of you to this August 18th meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission. I would invite all of you to stand with us and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ben Berry, Morrison.
Here.
Schramke.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Chairperson Crisius.
Here. Ms. Schramke, I believe you have the first item of business. No, wait, we have the minutes motion. I'm sorry, about to skip over you.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the reading of the minutes of the August 4th, 2014 meeting be waived until the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the Secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Shadle. Are there any corrections, any additions? Call the roll, please.
Aye.
Ben Berry.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Schramke.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Chairperson Crisius.
Aye. Now, Ms. Schramke, I'm sorry, we have the first item of business.
I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zoning change from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to MU Mixed Use Zone for property located at 2711 New Holt Road be adopted.
Second.
Second by Shadle. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this issue, we ask you to please come forward to the podium so, and give us your name, please.
Katrina Hall with 5H Technologies. I'm just here to see if anybody had any questions about that zone change and the maps that you have and to kind of explain what we're doing. The proposed is to put in a 2,200 square foot building with the parking, associated parking and paving that goes with that. Anybody have any questions on it? Okay.
Is the, pardon me, just, is the ingress, ingress going to be off New Holt Road?
One off of New Holt Road and one off of Village Square Drive.
Okay, so we'll be on the, on the.
Yeah, it'd be both. The entrance to go in through the drive-through would be off of New Holt Road. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, this also is going through the annexation process. It's already received intent to annex approval from the city commission. The next scheduled city commission meeting, your recommendation on the zone change as well as a final annexation plat will be forwarded to the city commission for approvals.
I think it's important to mention, just for everyone here, that anytime a property is annexed or is proposed to be annexed into the city, it comes in as an R1. And then we have to rezone the property based upon what would be appropriate for that particular area. So that's why it is being requested that it be changed to an MU.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Schramke.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Wade.
Abstain.
Morrison.
Aye.
Chairperson Crisius.
Aye. Mr. Morrison, you have the next item of business.
I do. I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zoning change from R2 Low and Medium Density Residential Zone to R4 High Density Residential Zone for property located at 1139 and 1179 Lone Oak Road and 1121 Sanders Avenue be adopted.
Second.
Second by Schramke. Again, this is a public hearing, so if you have any comments that you would like to make, please come to the podium and give us your name.
Jack Monday with Dummer Surveying and Engineering, here to answer any questions.
Have another egress, ingress, or are you going to have a egress, ingress off of Lone Oak Road or just going to be on the Highland Boulevard?
Would it be off Lone Oak Road, just directly across from Highland Boulevard?
Yeah.
This went through, this property went through a zone change a few years back and this intersection and the signalization, everything went through city engineering and stuff, but then the development fell through. And we've pretty much just shown the same entrance that was, that was approved back then.
I have a question about where the front of the building is going to be facing. Is it going to be facing the road, the entrance, or is it going to be facing out towards Lone Oak Road?
It's my understanding it's facing Lone, it's about here from the.
Come on up, so we can hear you.
I'm Karen Stone with Century 21. I represent the buyers. And they, the buildings, the way that they sit, they do expect it to face Lone Oak Road and they'll have signage on the front of their building. So that entrance will be to the left of the building coming off of Lone Oak Road, one of the two buildings. Oh, well, I guess to the right if you're, if you're looking towards the building to the right.
Yes.
What was the zoning that was approved at the, when this was platted before?
That was a big B1.
It was, it was a B1.
B1, correct.
It was a bank.
I knew it would have to be something above R4.
It was. And then, then that zoning was rescinded too. So. I just want to be sure, the front building is going to be two stories and the back building is going to be one? Are you going to do infill to help level out? I mean, it's a pretty sloping lot in the back.
The back building actually is a one-story with a walkout basement, I think, is what we.
What they're proposing?
Yes.
Makes sense.
Right. The, the front building is two-story with a walkout basement. So from Lone Oak Road, it's one-story. You go around the back.
Ah, okay.
Then we're down there level with the one-story behind it.
I was looking at the property today. I drive by there every day and I was trying to imagine how two-story building would look on that property, but it's really only, only going to be one story with the second story.
Lone Oak Road would look like a one-story, can it have a walkout basement on the back?
Any other questions, comments? Anyone else who'd like to comment on?
Come in.
Please, please come up and, and speak. And give us your name, please.
Waltersville.
Come right up and tell us your name.
My name is Waltersville. I live on the corner of Sycamore and Davis. And I guess my question is with the zoning change on that block, how far back are we, are we expecting to build into the subdivision?
Can you show him a copy of the block?
The property that's being proposed for the zone change stops at a, that's an alley, isn't it, Steve? Undeveloped alley.
Undeveloped alley.
It's back here. Here are lots here, then it faces undeveloped Davis Street.
So, yes, these, these will be.
Those are undeveloped.
They will not be developed.
At, down the road, there's a possibility that they may try to develop Davis Street, provide access through those.
Okay, well, I purchased the Vernon and Nancy Mae lots back six years ago. I actually took care of, mowed and monitored the Cafferty Consulting property that's right up from me for six years now.
On Davis Avenue?
Yes, on Davis Avenue, just because I wanted my area to be clean and maintained. The other issue I'd like to bring forward is in the, in the wooded area back where the, lots are, they're not going to be developed. And even up, up to the Jason Miranda Rice area, there's a lot of wildlife back there. There's a lot of deer, a lot of turkey, there's owls nesting in the woods, hawks nesting in the woods. And, I mean, I just hate to see that part of it gone. I mean, what, what's done up here on Lone Oak Road is, is fine. I mean, you know, I'll grow some trees, you know, no big deal. But I hate to see us lose back towards Davis Avenue. So I'd like for y'all to consider that. I mean, like I said, you know, it's going to, I, I think if, if we develop up towards Lone Oak Road, it won't affect anything in the old neighborhood back here. Sanders was, was developed as a residential area. It's an old residential area. And I can tell you right now, if this happens, unless Cafferty Consulting would like to buy my property also, you're going to drive my property as a residential house.
You realize that tonight, we're not considering the rezoning on that property back there at all.
Right, I understand that. And that's why I wanted to make sure, because if we stop for, for this shows, the Mid Country Bank, then the woodlands will be.
Preserved.
And, and, you know, I'd even consider if Cafferty Consulting would sell me the two lots in front of me and the six or seven lots beside them, he had a residential price, I could save my property price. But I just don't see that happening. I've already talked to Mr. Cafferty a couple of times and, you know, he's throwing big numbers out there. So, I just wanted to make that statement that, you know, in doing this, it will drive down my property. There's no doubt. So, thank you for having me.
I have a question, just a curiosity. Mid Country Bank that's listed there, where is their property? And it almost looks like that is only accessible by undeveloped alleyways.
That is.
Used to be South Point.
Used to be, yeah, it used to be South Point Bank.
Is that the group that originally was going to develop the property?
Originally owned it. And I think when they prepared the deed for Mr. Cafferty to buy it, I think they missed that piece. That was a piece from an alley closing and it was part of a street closing that the city then deeded to the bank. And I think he, Mr. Cafferty's in the process, I think, talking with his attorneys to get that.
Get that cleaned up? Okay, good.
But, you know, we didn't include that little piece in this because he didn't, technically he hadn't owned that little piece of property.
That makes sense. I'm just curious about it. It looks like it's a KRS issue.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Come, come up.
Well, no, I mean, this site will be subject to the stormwater ordinances of the city, where stormwater will have to be detained at a predeveloped rate. So any stormwater that releases from the property will be released at a rate that, that was the same or less than is, that it is right now.
If you want to see, there's a drawing here that shows the storm drain. They've already considered that. I don't know if you want to come look at it.
And actually, where that slew is, I think you're talking about, is where they're putting the stormwater detention, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
I have a question, just kind of brought it up as you were talking about some of those things. You show a lot of trees on this particular and so forth. Will all that stay? Is that? Which one?
A lot of them are already.
That's the zone change plat. Those are existing trees at the site. Most of those will not be able to stay due to the, the building and, but the site will be landscaped in accordance with the city ordinances and trees provided based on the parking spaces.
And we don't usually see trees on the plats, so.
I know.
I think this is unusual that they're showing magnolia trees, et cetera. I mean, it's nice, I like it, but.
It's important at the time for the client to know where they were, because they were going to try to save his means.
Yeah, I think it could be a little misleading with them being on there as what the finished product.
Well, and I'm not even sure that they're all still there, are they?
No, it's been, this is, yeah, this was, this was made from an old drawing to expedite time and minimize cost.
I believe Mr. Cafferty, yeah, I believe Mr. Cafferty had already removed most of the trees prior to our offer to purchase.
Yeah, that's why I say it's a little misleading, look at, looking at all the.
And maybe this is a question more for Mr. Irwin.
Yes, sir.
Do we do the environmental piece of this, as was brought up, you know?
As far as landscaping and screening?
Yeah, in terms of, I understand landscaping in terms of blocking a view or holding down traffic sounds and those sort of things, but.
From a, from a, from a visual impact, yes.
Yes.
Any type of, you have professional offices and or parking adjacent to residential zone or residences, they're required to submit a solid screen, 80% opaque during winter months. In this instance here, they're proposing a landscape.
Right.
Screen and not a wooden screen or a fence-type screen. I think there's a note on the plat. The actual type of screen and how that's actually going to be laid out will be part of a landscape plan, as part of their site development plan. And that will be submitted at a later date after the zone change approval has gone through. But that's an existing law of the city of Paducah.
Right. And it, maybe it's kind of a tangent to everything, but just kind of curious, as it was raised, the environmental consideration to wildlife. Is that part of our planning?
That typically has not been part of, of this board's duties.
Right. Okay. You answered it. Thank you.
Is there any more comments or questions?
Would that come under any department, the wildlife issue?
I'm not aware. There's, there's parts of ordinance that, certainly we have an ordinance that, you know, controls different types of, of animals in the city, but as far as at that level, no.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to make a comment tonight? Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Morrison.
Aye.
Schramke.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Chairperson Crisius.
Aye. Mr. Shadle, you have the Starlight Enterprises information.
I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on a proposed amendment to the development plan for property located at 3545 Starlight Drive be adopted.
Second.
Second by Schramke. Is anyone here to speak for the applicant or?
I believe there is. I can say that in the original staff report submitted, I brought up some concerns about development within an existing drainage easement.
Yes.
I know that the applicant has been working with our engineering public works department, and I did receive word through an inden that you have, that those concerns that were originally brought up have been satisfied.
Madam Chair, Barry McDonald with Bill Adams Construction. This is Jeff Martin. He's a developer for the project. And the development is a 5,000 square foot bread distribution center with the related site work. And as Mr. Irwin said, we have been working with them on, there's, there's two drainage easements, private drainage easements on, on the north and east side of the property. So we had, had some paving in those areas and we have removed that paving and shifted the building somewhat and think tried to meet those desires of the engineering department.
So this is a facility that tractor-trailers would deliver and then be distributed in smaller vehicles.
Right.
To the local groceries. And, and where, I guess I'm not seeing where the loading docks are.
Is that the 23 by 75 concrete pad? That's not the loading dock. That is the loading dock.
That's the one dock for the semi trucks that will come in. The rest are bread trucks. Yes, correct. So there's a total of, I believe, 10 doors. You can see them on, kind of hard to see, but they're located on the, there's three additional doors located on the side where that.
Oh.
Dock is. And then on the other side of the building, there's, I believe there's eight doors there.
I see. The door, so you'll have, so the best case scenario here is you always have, you'll only have one tractor-trailer at a time because you only have one door.
No, ma'am, I mean, it could have.
Be two doors.
Two doors.
Two doors there, yes.
Okay. And the rest all along here are the smaller vehicles.
Bread trucks.
Will there be any other vehicles, such as the smaller bread trucks, that'll be parked on the facility, on the parking lot for any length of time?
It would be possible. They could leave the trucks there at night, some of them. Some, most of them will drive them home, but there'd be a few that will leave them.
And I guess, I'm not really sure where, are the parking spaces here in the front for that? Or are they for people who are working within the building?
Employees, yes.
Employee parking?
The trucks would be at the doors.
Right, be parked at the doors.
I think the parking code, we exceed that number by like two spaces, I believe, or one and a half or two spaces.
I guess the one thing that was missing for me, and I had to go online and actually look at this, you know, at the, at the subdivision, was there's not a site map to kind of tell me where it is. I can know where it is. But some of the other members may not be quite as familiar with this subdivision. It is on the south side, I believe, off of Clark's River Road. And we have dealt with this property before as far as siding when they developed the subdivision. But that's one thing that I'll see in the future.
I noticed that the one is a 40-foot ingress, egress, the other is a 30. I mean, the idea is that the tractor-trailers will be going in this one and the smaller trucks will be going in that one. So will the tractor-trailers then will not be going around the building?
No, ma'am.
They'll be doing a lot of backing up and things.
Is the operation at 24/7 or is that fair to ask?
Uh, 24/7. The semis usually come in at midnight, deliver the bread, and then they're gone. Then the drivers come in at as early as four, five in the morning, then they're usually done. They work eight to 10 hours a day. So there won't be anybody there after probably 5:00.
That was the assumption, I just didn't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Shadle.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Morrison.
Aye.
Schramke.
Aye.
Chairperson Crisius.
Aye. Ms. Schramke, you have the Baptist Health Paducah.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Baptist Health Paducah for the approval of campus signage to be located at 2501 Kentucky Avenue pursuant to Section 126-76B of the Paducah zoning ordinance. I further move that this commission find that the signs will not have a negative impact on vehicular traffic or adjacent neighbors and that the planning commission has approved authority for the campus signs to be located at 2501 Kentucky Avenue. I further move the application be approved.
Second.
Second by Wade.
This is page two of our rebranding plan. Last year, we came to the commission and got approval for the two beacon signs, the one that went up on DLB 3 and the other one at the front entrance. So what we're doing now, if you've got the campus plan, all the little colored tabs on there, every one of those are signs that are going to be replaced. Pretty much everything we're doing, it's an existing sign and it's just going to be replaced with a new one. There are a few new lit signs that I'll point out along the way, so we can just kind of go through this package. And I'll point out, too, that this package was developed for our whole corporation, so not every picture in here is our hospital in Paducah. Some of these are in other buildings. So the first page, number three, that's just showing some address numbers that would go on the top of the DLBs. And those are backlit letters. Now, those are new. We do not currently have addresses on those buildings, so the addresses there would be new. The next page, five.
Excuse me, would that be on all of, like, the office buildings?
No, just the 3D doctor's office buildings.
Well, okay, that's what I was thinking, the office.
Yes, not all the, not the heart center and all those.
How many address signs would you have, just the one?
Three.
Three on, I mean, for each building?
For each building.
Is there three for each building or on each side?
No, there's, there's one for each building in the upper-left corner.
Okay.
I think this is showing Lexington's campus here, and if you can see up in the top-right corner of the building, letters up there. That's how it would be on our building.
So where it currently says Doctor's Building 3 or?
It would be to the left of that.
It would be on that same side?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And all three of those buildings, all the signs would be facing the parking garage.
That's what I was trying to find out.
Yes. The next page, this one and page, let's see, page 15, those two signs are identical or the, well, they're the same size. The one on page five, those are some signs that are interior to the campus that would be right in front of the doctor's office buildings. And they, they'll mark, tell you which building you're at. And, and these are new on, that are lit on the campus.
Let me stop you a minute. Page 15, am I the only one that's not seeing page?
Where are the numbers on?
Bottom right corner.
Oh, it says E-Drawing.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, John, I wasn't the only one.
Yeah.
Code.
Okay.
So if, if you want me to point them out on the campus plan, I can too. Just let me know if you don't follow anything. So those are right in the front lawns of the DLBs, three locations, that's page five. 5.1, we do not have those on our campus. Page six, these are the letters that match the address, the address numbers that I showed you earlier. And these do replace the words that say Doctor's Office Buildings on the tops, but these are backlit. They're currently not lit.
But again, they are facing the parking garage, correct?
Right, right. 7.1 is our new entrance sign on the brick wall. It's currently convex and the new one will be concave, or I'm sorry, the current one's concave and the new one will be convex, just flipping that around.
When you say currently, all the old signs are still there? When you say currently, all the old signs are still there?
Well, the brick wall is still at the front entrance. We've taken the Western Baptist brass letters off. That's gone. But we're going to do a new small brick wall that's about the same height as the existing one with the new signage on top.
But I guess my question is, has any of these new signs been installed yet?
No, none of these in this package.
Thank you. That's a good thing.
We, the only thing we've done, the big signs on all the corners, those big, huge ones, we've taken the Western Baptist off of those and just put a cover over that said Baptist Health. Number 10.1, we're not, we don't have those at our facility. 11, we are getting a new emergency sign. And right, if you're on the campus plan, if you look at the main front entrance, it's the red, where the little white cross and the red tab is.
That's the second page on yours?
Mm-hmm.
Where it says PA 1.0.
That's a new sign that we don't currently have.
I see.
Okay. 14, just banners on the light posts. And then 15, that's all the replacements of all the new signs, the big signs on the corners. And our current signs are 16 foot 6 inches tall. These are 12 foot tall, so.
I was gonna say, they look shorter.
Yeah, so we're going down in scale, so it's going to look a lot nicer, I think. And those are all, all of those are replaced ones in current locations with the exception of, if you look back on the campus plan, at 27th and Washington, currently that sign is located on the east side of that block right there. We're moving it to the west side.
Where the berm is, in that area.
Yes. And then, page 16, that one is at 20, let's see, there's one at 27th and Kentucky. There's some of those located interior of the campus. And the one at 27th and Broadway, where the Child Development Center is, that little funny one that's up on a post?
Oh.
Yes, that replaces that. Those are not lit. Page 17, we don't have those first two on the left. We have some of those on the right. Those are not lit, internal campus signs. Page 18, we do not have that graphic. That's for Lexington. Page 20, that's at all the public entrances. That's just a wall-mounted sign. We'll be labeling all our entrances alphabetically, so you'll have a little bit better description of where you are. Page 21, all the regulatory signs on the campus will be replaced. 22, I'm not sure where those are going. Some probably internal campus. And the last page, all the signage on the parking garage, the signs shown here are at entrances, the parking garage. We currently have a perpendicular sign protruding out. It's small-scale above the entrances. These are a lot more vertical, where you can see the entrances better. And we'll be replacing all the interior signs in the parking garage and all the internal signage in the hospital, too, so.
And the parking garage signs are attached to the building?
Yes, to the parking garage.
So, they're taller, they're larger than they were, but they're right up against the building.
And they're not lit. Is that correct?
These are not lit. That's correct.
It is. That's worse.
I think that's right. Let me read it to make sure. Oh, now what? It does say they are lit. Yes, they're internally lit. It's under item number 2 on the right-hand side, second paragraph.
Mm-hmm. Will there be one on the exterior of the building facing, is it Kentucky Avenue? That side of the garage? I know the others, the interior, the one that faces the doctor's offices.
Yes, there's one on there, too. On the campus plan, it's the red tabs.
I see.
I've got a enlarged campus plan that I blew up a little. You can read those tabs a little better if y'all would like to see that.
So, the parking signs are lit. Now, are there others in here? I mean, I haven't read every one of these little.
The parking garage signs, the verticals are lit. Then the new doctor's office building letters on the top of the buildings are lit. I think that's the only new ones that aren't currently lit now that we're adding.
And they don't blink or anything?
Oh, no.
Good.
Mr.?
No electronic signs. Thank you very much.
No, no.
These all fit within the signage ordinance as far as?
This area is located in the hospital medical zone. What the HM Zone sign regulations do is allows a facility or use such as a hospital the ability to put a plan together and submit it to the planning commission for your approval just because of the pure size of it and the complexity of signage that is needed. So, yes, it fits within the zoning regulations with him bringing the plan to you for your approval.
And your review is it's not out of the ordinary as far as the amount of illumination or the?
No.
Okay. I wanted to know.
I'm pleased that those corner signs are going to be getting shorter. That's a good.
Me, too.
The city, would you have any questions? Any other comments?
This will happen within the next 18 months. All of our facilities should be complete within the next 18 months. I don't have an exact date on ours in Paducah yet.
I know this redesign has probably been a long process, has it not?
The last time we've done this was 17 years ago.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Chairperson Chrysillas?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison, you have the Centurion Development?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I move that this commission recommend approval to the Board of Adjustment regarding the application of Centurion Development LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a parking area for the English Apartments in the R1 Zone located at 1636 Jefferson Street. I further move that the additional findings of fact be adopted. Comprehensive plan states the need to increase the city's resident population. Comprehensive plan states that redevelopment and infill are essential. The comprehensive plan states that older areas need every encouragement to reinvest in the homes and neighborhood. Screening in the form of vegetation and fencing will be installed. The parking is proposed off the existing alley. The existing ingress egress off Jefferson Street will be removed.
Second. Second by Schramke. Someone here speak, please?
Jason Coulter from Cape Girardeau.
Dustin Richardson.
Just wanted to answer, answer any questions y'all might have regarding this or if anybody's noticed the building or has any questions about the building. Welcome any comments or concerns.
How many units are in that building?
12 one-bedrooms.
You're providing parking for what?
For the tenants. We were concerned that, based on the way the other structures and the other commercial developments are, there's a, there's a commercial building directly to the west, a commercial building directly to the south. The existing owner, we first tried to acquire parking from the existing owner of the commercial building to the south. He was concerned if he ended up selling that building and a bigger commercial tenant came in, they wouldn't have adequate parking for him. We were concerned about, we do a lot of historic preservation and redevelopment in Cape Girardeau, and we were concerned, given how close this building sits to the corner of, I think the intersection is challenging directly to the west.
Yes.
It's one-way and two-way and to the, to the west of it. And we were kind of concerned about parking in front of a lot of residences. If you have 12 tenants, if 12 tenants would have a visitor, which we hope they don't, that's not what our intentions are for these tenants. But everybody has company every now and then. We didn't want it to become a traffic hazard on the, on the rightaways and stuff. So, we did, when we bought this building, we had acquired the, a lot immediately to the east. We realized we weren't going to be able to utilize the parking lot directly to the south. We thought, right now, it's being used by people. We'd prefer not to use it for parking and other things. So, we want to clean it up, fence it, greenscape it, you know, make it more desirable, make it look almost like it's a part of the building, plus it's another amenity for our tenants.
I've driven by this property many times and I can tell you that I am glad to see it finally being redeveloped because I had serious concerns that it was not going to survive. So, thank you very much for that. The question that I have has to do with the trees that are there. You're showing trees here. Are these trees that you would be planting? Would you be cutting down all the trees that are currently there?
If a tree is savable, that fits outside the park, our goal is not to eliminate any trees whatsoever. However, if they sit right in the middle where a parking spot goes, you know, we would replace those with, with small, you know, small trees that are, that are maintainable and, and we don't assume that those are just going to be shrubs. I'm not sure exactly what city ordinance reads as far as height of new, of new plantings or anything like that. One thing we were trying to be mindful of in speaking with Steve is we did do setbacks on this parking lot so that if a neighbor that adjoins this lot to the east is sitting on their front porch and happens to look east or west from their, from their front porch or their front yard, they wouldn't see any parking. They would see landscaping and nice, you know, nice residential amenities, not, you know, several car bumpers and things like that.
Right. And so, you are putting up a fence?
That's the, that's the goal. And that's honestly mostly to kind of make it, make the lot, make the parking lot feel like it goes with the building, additionally to keep some of the things that are going on to the east from impeding in our, our tenants' space, so.
On your sheet, it says down at the bottom, 12 proposed.
Correct. And there's only 10 there.
Okay.
Yeah, well aware of that. We were not aware of the, at the time, we were not aware that there was a 30-foot ordinance regarding dumpster, dumpster, a dumpster pad. So, our goal is to, this is an initial rendering. Go ahead, Steve, if you.
I think you see on the back where it says 10 by 30 dumpster pad. When he, when they are proposing to redo this parking area, if you've been out there, the alley's in pretty bad shape, too. I think he'll be working with Engineering Public Works Department, actually rehabbing the alley also and making, you know, sliding that into the parking area. When that's done, there'll be discussions on how else can they fit that, the dumpster pad on that site to the rear of the property. So, it's quite possible that with that dumpster pad sitting now, that there may be one more additional parking space added in the rear. I don't think two, but, you know, it's very possible, one.
And how are you with 11 spark, 10 or 11 parking spaces per 12-unit residence?
Well, you know, great, just because it's existing non-conforming right now. There's no parking spaces. So, they're actually coming into more compliance each time they would add one more parking space.
Are they still out of compliance, then?
Well, it has been since 1926.
But they're not going to come into compliance?
No, because typically, new construction apartments, depending on the bedrooms, can be up to two parking spaces per apartment. I mean, I don't think we'd ever be able to get to that point.
Steve, when they, when they.
It's not, it's not that it's not in compliance. It's what's called existing non-conforming.
It's grandfathered.
Basically, yes.
But you're, you're saying it's getting closer, but it's still not there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, and our fear, honestly, is, you know, our goal is not to sell this building. Our goal is to continue to, to work with the City of Paducah and potentially do more development over here, just as we diversify our companies. Our concern is that if we would ever sell the building in 10, 20, 30 years, not having use of adequate parking poses a problem not only for the city, but for us as well. So, we're just trying to work within, work within boundaries and city government to get something that's, you know, as close to city code as possible. I mean, we battle.
I'm guessing that there will be tenants who will, who will either park or have visitors who will park in that existing parking lot, even though that's not really.
Yeah, we have verbal approval, but if, you know, I mean, you never know who the next owner is.
Right.
And we would rather not, not rely on a gentleman's agreement.
Yes.
We work to try and get an easement.
Sure.
It just, you know.
As you say, that the building was built, what, in 1920?
1926.
And it was probably nothing but on-street parking.
Yeah, actually, the building is pretty much the property lines.
Pardon me?
The building is pretty much the property lines if you look at the site plan. I mean, it's a postage stamp, just a little bit of room around the outside of it.
And candidly, when we bought the building, we're used to Missouri law or ordinance and you can't build on the property line in Missouri, but you can in Kentucky. And so, we thought like, oh, well, surely we have, you know, some, some be able to put parking right behind the building because that's, I mean, where would anybody park before, you know? And we were, I was quick to jump, but my fault, so.
So, you're not planning on having any parking on the street on Jefferson?
It's, it's, I mean, we would, we would, we would prefer just for safety and people exiting cars or groceries. It's, it is very tight. And frankly, if I owned a residential home next to this building, I wouldn't want 15 cars, you know, out when I mow the yard, then I'm going to get yelled at for blowing grass, you know? I mean, it's just, it's not adequate. So, this lot was, seemed to be perfect, and it's not. If you drove by it right now, you would welcome this drawing versus what you see.
Oh, yes.
So, and we, and just, you know, as far as, as far as the, as far as to the extent of even preserving the building that we've gone through, work, like, right now, we're, we're keeping as much of the original hardwood floors. You can imagine how bad the roof was leaking and different things like that on this building. If, we welcome anybody to, you know, go through it any time. But it's a very nice, it's been tastefully done.
Parking is allowed on Jefferson there in front of the building.
It is. It is, yeah.
So, help me understand why the setback before the parking place?
That was actually a request of mine. What I like to see is, typically in residential zones, you have certain setbacks for buildings. And one of the reasons for that is for established view sheds for people sitting on their front porch just to be able to look down the streets. I wanted to keep that same view shed. As you're driving down the street, you're not going to see a six or eight-foot fence right up on the sidewalk. You're going to have a front green space, even very similar to where the houses. So, it's going to, it's going to be less intrusive.
It's much nicer looking, actually.
It's our goal, our goal, like I said, is, is to get, hopefully at minimum, which I don't think we'll get any more than two, best case, but our goal is to at least have 12 so that we don't get in tenant challenges with, they took my spot because I lived here before they did, you know, just trying to meet, trying to meet the demands of our tenants as well, so.
How many stories is that building?
It's three.
Three. No elevator?
No.
Uh, no. No elevator.
Pretty much guess, it would be a younger group in there.
Uh, you know, the staircase, well, the staircase is wide. We've got properties in Missouri that, you know, that it's, you know, you think everyone would be on, want to be on a main level, but some people want to be up one floor just for secure, an additional level of security. The nice thing about these, these will be keypad entrances, I believe. There's fire breaks on each level, so you'll enter through another fireproof door. So, if the hallway or anything ever did catch on fire, all that obviously complies with city code, but it'll be very, very nice. We're keeping the original handrails, the wood, the wood staircase. All that's getting refinished right now and it's going to look a lot like it did when it was originally built, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a conditional use permit. This is a conditional use permit application. The Planning Commission does make a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment will hold a public hearing, of course.
Call the roll, please.
Morrison?
Aye.
Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Chairperson Crisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle, you have Community Ministries?
Which number is that, five?
No.
Wait, wait.
Six.
Six, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Community Ministries, AKA Community Kitchen, for approval to waive 27 parking spaces at 1237 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive pursuant to Section 126-7B, two of the Paducah zoning ordinance. I further move that this commission find the waiver of 27 parking stalls shall have no negative impact on the property, and the majority of patrons do not drive, and typically less than 20 cars are present during a lunch hour, and that the Planning Commission has approved to waive the parking requirements at 1237 Martin Luther King Drive. I further move the application be approved.
Second.
Second by Wade. And Morrison, I would add.
Noted.
I have a question of not that facility, but next door, the church, where do they park?
On-street. A lot of churches historically in the older parts of the city provide no on-street parking, it was always street-side.
But it says here there is no on-street parking.
It was dispersed throughout the streets, and some may even walk, depending on where they live, but...
There's parking behind that church?
There may be just a few spaces off of the alley.
Never seen a car, you talking about Park Avenue?
Certainly not enough for a congregation.
Yeah, Martin Luther King.
I mean, Martin Luther King.
I believe the property owner also was looking at some other properties within the immediate vicinity, in case they ever need additional parking in the future. I don't think any of those properties have been secured, but I believe they're moving in that direction.
Talking about the east or in back... Okay.
In addition, if this property, let's say, at some point in the future, they found another property where they wanted to move, would we revert back to the requirement for parking for that particular facility, or are we permanently waiving the parking requirement?
This is, we permanently waive for this use for that site.
Only for this use?
Yeah, but if they ever found parking in the future, it is Zone B3, so it would be principally permitted, they could just be able to put the parking in. If a new use came in, they changed hands, they would have to provide the parking for that, like, yeah, full-service restaurant or something in the future.
Exactly, that's what I was concerned about.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Schramke?
Aye.
Chairperson Crisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Schramke, you have the Travis Rudd waiver of subdivision?
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Travis Rudd for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 832, 834, and 836 Mayfield Road. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second by Morrison. I have some, I have a question. It concerns this encroachment?
Yes.
The fence encroachment and also the air conditioning unit?
Yes. There looks like the sidewalk, part of the AC pad, and the AC fence, AC pad fence is encroaching. The owner who bought this land is aware of that. I don't think he's gonna, at this point, it's not a big deal to him. It's encroaching on him, the person who bought the land, Travis Rudd, so... I just wanted to point that out.
I guess my question has to do with if Emily Scott, the person, that's who's listed here as the owner of that land, if that person tried to sell that property and part of their sidewalk and AC unit is encroaching on this property, how will that affect them getting clear title to the property?
She'd have clear title to her property? You're talking about her property?
Right.
This guy chose to, he could make her remove the encroachment, but she'd still get clear title of what she has inside the property lines.
But, I was gonna say...
So, it'd be a good idea to get with your neighbor and come up with an agreement?
It would, wouldn't it?
Be friendly, yes.
Yes.
Is there a structure on this property now?
No, sir.
But the intent from the staff report is to build a garage with a living space?
Correct? Yes.
And is that allowable for a garage with a living space to conform?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we talking about a garage like where you would do auto repair? Or are we talking about a garage like I would have behind my house?
I believe a garage where you would, not auto repair, just like a normal garage like you would have at your house.
I guess is my concern.
I haven't seen the architectural plans. What I envision, though, is a garage on the first floor with a living space above it. The R3 zoning regulations, as well as all of our zoning regulations, just say it has to be a single-family and/or two-family in the R3 zone. Our zoning ordinance does not regulate design with most places in the City of Paducah.
Well, if they were considering building a garage that was gonna be a business, that would be a concern.
That would be a concern, yes.
So, that's why I ask the question.
Gotta be one on two of those lots.
Then how do you...
Be one on two of those lots.
But by us abolishing the lot lines, how do you determine where B1 and B and R3 starting to stop?
Right, exactly.
One of the lots is R3, and the other two are B1.
Right.
Well, if, of course, this is the subdivision process where they're just asking to abolish the property lines. If they wanted to build a garage on those B1 zone, in the B1 zone, they would have to submit a site development plan to the Planning Office in compliance with the zoning regulations. So, they could really do that right now on a B1 lot. That's not my understanding, that was gonna be commercial, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that brings up another good point, which is, if two of the lots are Zoned B1 and one is Zoned R3, and we're gonna eliminate the lot lines...
That's what I'm just trying to get to, yeah.
What do we have? Do we have all R3s, or do we have all B1s?
It would stay just like it is right now, except you wouldn't have a property...
The zoning line...
We've got, we've got a lot of zoning lines that go along a roadway, but it's not along a property line.
Or through the middle of property.
Or it bisects a property line.
Bisect a property?
That's the old Euclidean zoning, and that's what they had one lot, and they had a strip here for a high business, and then a strip here for lesser intents.
We're okay with that?
Yeah, we have a GIS layer that will, regardless of the property line, it will show where that actual zoning line is.
Okay, as long as that's gonna continue to be available for plating?
Oh, I can assure you, it will be, ma'am.
Educating me, yeah.
Monitoring, too.
Yes.
Interesting.
That's not what the city's ready to take in zoning.
There is, too.
That's the first time I've ever seen something like that, ever dealt with something like, where we're eliminating lot lines, and two of them are one zone and one is different zone, so that's the reason why I asked the question. Are there any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Chairperson Crisillas?
Aye.
Is there any other business to come before the commission tonight? Then we stand adjourned.